Are there any board and committee reports? Eric, thank you. Municipal Building Committee has a report for us.
Eric Swan, 14-year-old farmway Municipal Building Committee. Real quick report tonight, we're in the midst of revising feasibility report and updating site plans and conceptual site plans and floor plans. Got a first pass last week, made some edit comments, they're going back. We hope to have, the target is to have information back by the end of February, and the key date is March 8th for a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Municipal Building Committee has the first. You have some finance items on the agenda, and Municipal Building Committee would like to make a similar presentation as we did last time with the library. We will try to have as much packaged and out to everybody as soon as possible. Things move a little bit slower, so given the time between now and March 8th, we may not have it except for that week of the meeting. So, we're working hard. That's the report. You guys have any questions or anything for the committee?
The feasibility study that you've sent back, is it worth us looking that over? Or is it so far off from what you wanted that...
It's, the same information that was there previously two times past is still valid information. It needs to be concise and brought forward in an executive summary, because as we learned, most people don't read a whole report. It's not two pages, people get bogged down. So, we're trying to make an executive summary and make the points clear. There'll be some additional questions and answers in terms of reasoning, and then we'll have program schedules and plans and budgets in the back. So, we're trying to add and clarify the information is the real intent this time. If you don't have a copy of a previous report, I will email you one or get you one if you'd like it, but it's the same thing that we've already previously issued.
No, I have lots of them. I was just curious, you know, as we've discussed in the past, the sooner we can start putting stuff forward, so wasn't sure where, what the revisions for this report were like, so just curious.
It's not in any state to issue at this moment or this week.
Okay.
It's going as easily as everything else has, right?
Sure. Well, we've got more feedback from the public. We went through a vote, we're trying to answer those questions, we're trying to make sure the information that we have is not only accurate but explained well, and we're reaching out to additional consultants for the money that was requested at the fall annual town meeting in order to vet and provide more information to us. So, it's...
Seems to be very thorough.
We're trying.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you so much, Eric.
Thanks.
We have no public hearings tonight, and our town administrator has a report.
I just wanted to keep the board posted, this recent storm, we've got some areas of concern that are experiencing pretty severe erosion down, it's the same area, the Fordham Way, Dartmouth and Harvard Way area, so the emergency management agency is going to be keeping an eye on that. Doug and Sam have also been out there a couple of times, so they're going to be going out tomorrow to document more of what they see, but it is definitely an area of continued concern. I had an opportunity to meet with Susan Neuss to discuss the website project, and right now, the expectation is that the new site will go live on May 1st. So, the software is procured, and we're working with all the department managers to kind of update the information we have, and she's going to be putting together the look, so what you'll see when you call up the page. It's, she's trying to make it much more user-friendly so that people can find what they're looking for as easily as possible.
Does she need any help from the media committee on this?
I'm sure she would welcome help from the media committee.
What's the date that she wants to go live?
5/1.
We have a meeting tomorrow night, I'll bring it up to them.
Okay.
Alicia?
Yes?
Just for kicks, what can they offer? Any idea, are you going to find that out when you have the discussion tomorrow?
Well, under the mission of the media committee, it came with, besides public access TV, also came the media and the website, that's under our purview of...
Now, do you have resources, I mean, I'm not trying to pin you down, because I know you want to talk to your contemporaries, but do you have help within the committee? Or is there actual, maybe, financial, you know, is there money to help?
Possibly.
With a person?
Possibly.
Maybe? Good.
I don't know if we could fund a position.
Well, that's one of the things that I'm exploring in this year's budget proposal is communication has been a common theme that we've been lacking since I've been here anyway, I've heard it numerous times. So, if we could create a position, rather than having someone who is the administrative support of the Conservation Commission, and is the parking clerk, and the administrative support of the Inspection Services Department, and is also the zoning board of appeals admin, and the IT person, and parking clerk, you know, if we could really dedicate some funding for an IT position, or, I'm not sure what you, we would call it, we would title it, because it would be more comprehensive than just IT, we may be able to address some of those concerns.
So, here's the Newbury Media Committee's mission, as stated on the website. "The mission of the Newbury Media Committee is to develop and promote access to electronic communications media on behalf of the town of Newbury. We serve to foster free speech, creative expression, and civic engagement, and to give a voice to all. Currently, media are developed for the government access TV channel provided and funded by contract with Comcast and the town, and the town website. The committee is responsible for implementation and oversight of the production of programming for the channel, making programming decisions in accordance with operating policies and in consultation with the office of the town administrator, reviewing any appeals regarding decisions made on program requests, reviewing website content, and making recommendations for additions and improvements." So, the Media Committee's policies and procedures are subject to approval of the Board of Selectmen, yada, yada, yada. So, it is on there.
And I think for people that are in the television audience and people that are here tonight, part of what the conversation is, is like in any small town, a lot of our people that are in offices do more than one job, and it seems that we have a plea recently, because we've become complex with the Municipal Building Committee and other committees, that a lot of stuff should be on our website for people to review, and it seems when it isn't there, they think that we're not putting it there for some reason, and the real reason is, we just don't have the manpower and ability to get all the stuff up, because we're all struggling to keep up with everything else that's going on. So, did I misstep, state anything?
And I think that...
So, now it seems like, you know, you're in, and Tracy's thinking ahead to maybe having a person, if the budget could sustain that, which we don't know.
Well, I think that the Media Committee would be within their purview to maybe help with a consultant type of a thing, but to actually fund a position in perpetuity and hire somebody, I don't, I don't think that's in its purview. But, I know we definitely could partner with the local schools, see if we could get maybe an internship, if we want to look at colleges, I mean, anything's possible.
All right.
Okay. Also wanted to mention the last meeting of the Plum Island Study Committee, we were going to be rolling out a preliminary presentation of the Ogawa way parking lot, which is in draft format, it is not complete. Before we completed the project, we had planned to have a public hearing on the island. We weren't even going to be really rolling that out until the spring, but with the formation of the Plum Island Study Committee, we thought that might be in their purview. Unfortunately, the meeting wasn't properly posted, so we had to cancel it. I've been able to reschedule the, all of the consultant, MBPC, getting everyone together, but it's not going to be until March. But, I understand that the Plum Island Study Committee kind of is feeling that that's outside of the scope of their work, so I guess it would be more of an informational session put on by the Board of Selectmen. So, I don't know if you still want to hold it in March, where I've got everyone set up, or if you want to wait until the spring, or what you'd like to do.
Open for discussion?
Well, I think if it's already set up, we may as well hold it. I don't see why it would be outside, I mean, to my mind, it works into all of the issues on the Plum Island Study Commission is looking at, and so, I don't see why they feel it's not a part of their charge, but we can discuss that at a later date.
I'm also sure, attending all the meetings so far, that they actually don't feel it's beyond their scope, the scope could be involved, maybe the mission is like within sight of Center Island, but it could enter into the funding possibilities that could exist, so...
Well, I felt it was a part of it, because it seems like a revenue source for possibly getting the lifeguards back, or some sort of trash facilities. It seems like, if we don't consider that whole sort of little ecosystem, then, then they're doing the same thing we've done, where we take sort of shots at one problem at a time, rather than looking at the whole...
Okay, the parking lot's a formidable undertaking on its own, let alone all the rest of the stuff thrown in there. So, I understand their concerns, I truly do.
I like it. Want to talk about it? I think we should go. What do you guys think?
Now, that is going to be more like, almost like a public hearing, formal hearing.
Basically, what we wanted to do is have the engineers make a preliminary presentation, and we wanted to hear input from, you know, affected parties, or anyone in town, so that before we finalized the plan, we could take into consideration as many of the concerns as possible.
Which, what Tracy's saying, that still could be a good bit away, and yet, it might be good to roll it out early, listening to the members. JR?
Let's do it. I, I'm a little bit afraid that the parking lot's kind of a hot topic that the committee doesn't want to touch, so if they don't want to, we will.
Yep.
What's the date, do you know March what? I believe it's March 3rd, it's a Thursday. I'll send out an email and let you know the date and the time.
That's going to get posted and everything, right?
Yes, oh yes. Okay. Also have a meeting scheduled for this Friday with representatives from R.J. Kelly to review office space over in the Byfield Expo building, to get some pricing and to see what would meet our needs, because we have only five months left before we've got to put together a plan of where we're going to go. So, I'll get back to you with the pricing as soon as I have it available. Budget preparation is moving forward, it's a little bit slow, I'm both a little bit behind, just because we've had so many issues coming up here, but also, it makes things a little more tenures, because we've moved the meeting date up a month, so things are going to come together at the end, and we may need to call an extra selectmen's meeting, which we have done in the past during budget season, so just to put you on notice for that.
You probably need to close your door a little.
Yeah.
As you know, Tracy's very accessible to everyone that walks in, and that's what she wants to do, but during budget time, you'll see her here on Fridays and Saturdays and every other day, because probably time to really close the door, and you and me stay out, and everyone stay out.
Also received the draft management letter from Municipal Resources, Inc. They are the group that are looking at the fire department management structure, and will be providing you some recommendations. So, I'll review that with a consultant next week, and also with the fire chief, to make sure everything that they heard from us was accurately recorded, and then I'll provide a copy to you guys for review and action, if necessary. And the review of all the town-owned and leased fire apparatus will be started in March, so we hope to have that complete by the end of March as well. And that's it.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
Do you know where the snow and ice budget is, given how light things are right now?
I don't have the balance right now, but I can get that to you. We're not anywhere near a deficit, if that's what you mean, but...
The price of salt went crazy, and they've been using a lot more salt than they have actually plowing, so, you know.
I'll get you there.
And I mean, it's funny, everyone doesn't realize, but I think I heard NECN write when they said, "We're only like four or five inches behind a normal..."
An average season.
We're not like last year, but an average year, so...
It's nothing normal though, last year.
All right, this is kind of interesting, and it's under new business, and Dr. Keith Abloh is here, and it's kind of neat that Cole, you're on the agenda before Dad, so I mean, that's, that's pretty big.
Do you have a suggestion, many...
Great, and you guys can present it together, so it'll be great.
They're going to hand you something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'm truly here, you guys can hang with me, truly here as their ambassador, my son
Cole, who's 13, and Anna, who's now 14, right, have been moved by the importance of historic greens, beginning with our own. I live on 16 Green Street, Anna is from Hamilton, and the green there is important to her. They're going to speak a little bit to this. So, they motivated me to create the beginnings of an organization that would seek to improve the town greens, which are historic, beginning with their own, and to actually form a not-for-profit eventually, it's not yet formed, we have a logo, we don't yet have a website, but they would then seek donations, and perhaps to partner with large organizations, if the adults involved, and Anna's stepdad's here, Mike Knoll, could put them in touch with some folks, and I know people at Keep America Beautiful, et cetera. So, basically, the idea here is, could we get a sense from you folks as to whether you would welcome us back with a plan as to what somebody might propose to make the green really glisten, in terms of, you know, what improvements could be made to our green? We'd get an actual park architect to say, "Look, this could be some of the menu items." So, all we're wondering about tonight is, could we be welcomed back for that? We'll raise the money for the study. So, this is a budget-neutral thing for you, we're not asking for money, it's a unique thing, and it's really, that's as much as I have to say about it, because from here, the kids can take it from here, so...
All right.
This is Anna Weinberg.
Hi, Anna.
Hi, my name is Anna, I'm 14 years old, and I'm in ninth grade. So, one thing I really noticed that's common about my school especially, is that kids are so indulged in social media and what it offers, and they don't really get out anymore and, well, hang out with their friends, go to the parks, and this is a perfectly good park, and it has a baseball field and everything, and people can go and they can play there, but it's not really, it's not really updated, and so, the things we're offering would be able to update it and make it more attractive to the human eye, where people could have social gatherings, and they could have maybe sport leagues there and such, because of the baseball field and such, and, yeah.
That was nice, thanks, Anna.
Yeah, so I'm Cole, I'm in eighth grade, and I'm 13 years old. I just kind of wanted to go over different aspects of the green that could be improved. So, I've lived at 16 Green Street for eight years, and I've always loved the green, I've played with my friends and played baseball there, but I've always noticed that it could be somewhat improved. I think the caretaking of the baseball field could be improved, and I think the pond, I've noticed that there happens to be some trash in it, and the edges aren't well taken care of, and the grass hasn't been, there's not a irrigation system, and I think that all of those could really make the park be at its full potential. I think that's really important for the community and for the town of Newbury.
Very astute.
And, so, and we know how many things are on your agenda, globally and tonight, so of course, there are things that can be improved about anything. This has caught Cole's and Anna's eye, they'd like to work on it, and to be very respectful, take no control of it, come back only with menu items, for you folks to consider whether you would like those things to go forward. If so, you would have the pilot seat in every aspect of it. Their job would be to raise funds with the adults, they can co-opt into that process, so that this becomes a community initiative, and at any point, if you felt like, you know what, it's going the wrong direction, you could say, "Guys, thank you, we think we're not going to go forward, but we wanted that green light for the first step," and to make this the christening effort with our own green, and then, you know, in their grandiose moments and mine, we think maybe it could be other greens around the state. So, that's our presentation.
I have a question?
Yeah, we have questions, and answers.
That's okay. So, you're focused on this green right here, across just the upper green. How about the lower green? Have you given any thought to the lower green?
Yeah, I think that could be another really great idea, and using it under inspirational.
Cole and Anna and, Doctor, have you been able to figure out what a motion from us would entail? Meaning, you know, let it rip a little so we can dig into what you think. What we found about our green, obviously, we do what we can with the money that's available. I was reading this, and it does say, "Which would seek to raise funds to restore and improve historic greens," so, you know, you're trying to keep it basically out of something that becomes budgetary for us.
Yes.
Unless it entails an improvement that entails a lot of maintenance. But, the thing that we also have found, which you, which the kids will find, and you will find, Dr. Abloh, is people also feel so invested in the green, like, were you here years ago when there was an idea to have an artistic rendering in the pool?
Yes.
Did you notice how many people liked it, and how many people didn't like it?
That's right, that's true.
And then we had an idea to put the trash monument that is at the school on the green, and that had some likes and some dislikes.
Yes.
So, there's a lot of different things that would go into how you wrap your minds around this too. I mean, people feel they really have a piece of the green, so just hold that in mind. Anything else from you guys?
I guess the first thing is that it, it's very encouraging to me that you guys are attempting this, you know, I love to see people involved in caring for our community, and so, the fact that you guys are doing that is just fantastic.
Outstanding.
And I certainly would encourage you guys to pursue it, come back to us. There may be a ton of pushback, you know, you may say, "We think tulips planted here are great," and people may scream and yell, because sometimes what one person thinks is a great idea, everyone else does not, or some people vocally don't. But, with that said, I'm really encouraged to see you guys doing this, and looking very forward to what you bring back to us. I think the board would appreciate you guys coming back and presenting some ideas to us.
Absolutely. How about preservation? Have you thought any, any thoughts about historic preservation when it comes to the green?
In terms of involving people who have a voice in the historic preservation of the town?
Well, no.
Or just in general?
Their opinion on how it says to restore and improve. How about preserve? I don't know if that's going to come in your purview, or...
Well, yeah, so, we know there's one...
You know a little bit about the history of the green.
Why don't you come up and stuff, because you know what, this gets you on TV.
Yeah, so, I've done research on the history of the green with the Revolutionary War, and the statue in front, which is extremely important, so what we want to do, we wouldn't want to take any history away from it, we just want to have the looks and availability to people, and make it beautiful for what it is, not take anything away, just build from what we already have. And if we want to add another monument to recognize the history of it, I don't think that would take away from any things that people want to preserve, so...
Great.
Yeah, basically, Cole really summed it up, like, we don't want to take away the history of it, the history is what makes it part of Newbury Port, and we appreciate, and we don't want to make it as different as it is, we just want to polish it up and make it more presentable. So, when people walk into Newbury Port, they're able to say, "Wow, that is one, no, I'm sorry." When they walk into Newbury, or they drive through Newbury, they can look at that park, and they can say, "Wow, that is something that they should be proud of."
And, you know, it's my own lack of knowledge, but for instance, I didn't know until they motivated me to learn more, that the pond was constructed to water cattle, right, for cattle to have water. I should know that, I've lived here a long time, but I don't, so it might be that they decide that there's a booklet that they can create, or who knows what, where it will go, but they know that they're learning during this process, so they don't expect it to be swift, or seamless, or unanimous. If this is something that gets done by the time they're done with high school, it would be terrific.
Well, Damon had a different outlook in Anna and Cole in some ways too, and, you know, Jimmy Cunningham is a local person with tremendous historic knowledge, he works at Spinaya, it would be good to start with him, because we have the two fields, one was a training field, one was more for, you know, the pasturing of cows and stuff. You know, it isn't always something big, because, you know, we come from lawns that are sometimes so very well-kept, and some of the history that comes from some of our greens is the fact they were used for a purpose, and they weren't perfect. But, I mean, certainly, like Damon said, it just kept me going in that respect, you know, the planting of flowers for a change, and some of those aspects that we, you know, making sure the benches are in good order, and maybe a new flag if we need, those little little things can go a long way to make that look really well. So, those are the things that, you know, the children are going to really learn as they go forward.
They already told me to not try for swans.
And then there's the, you learn, hopefully you'll learn when you go out there, about, JR, if you want to speak to the whole muster, it's a fireman's muster out there, they have the muster stations.
I was just about to mention that.
Yeah, it's one of the few places that were actually set up for old-fashioned fireman's musters with the pump and platform and everything.
Right.
It's really unique in New England, that was set up for that, yeah. And as you guys go along, I think what would really interest me, rather than reinventing the wheel, is restoration efforts, and I think the people of this town, the way they feel about the green, rather than making it fancy, maybe we can make it more like the way it was.
That's great.
And that'd be beautiful that way. And thank you guys so much for starting with us. It really makes me feel really good.
Do we need a motion for Cole and Anna to come back to us?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we encourage Greener to pursue ideas and bring us some proposals in the future when they have them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thanks.
We have a, the review of a commercial clam permit, is John Cole's here tonight? Come on up front a little, John, just a here. And it's your request, as I read that, that you kind of lightly found that you needed to do this, and that's why you're getting going at this late time, is that what it is? It's a hardship?
That's correct.
So, I know everyone's read it in their packet, is there any questions that you have for John, or any, and we can make a motion and discuss, but it's up to you guys the way you'd like to handle it. So, maybe ask for a motion to accept?
Sure. Move to accept the clam, the, is it a variance? What is it?
It's a hardship.
Hardship request for clam, commercial clam permit.
And if I have a second, then we'll discuss it, and if there's any trouble, we'll go back. Okay. Do I have any discussion among the board?
Well, my only discussion would be, have you talked with the clam warden and all of this? I mean, usually we get a lack of a recommendation from the fish commissioner, saying, "I don't know," or...
I have reviewed the matter with the...
Can you come to the microphone just a here? Thanks.
I have reviewed the matter, and I'm a commercial fisherman, so it's not a new endeavor
Okay. Do I have any discussion among the board?
Well, my only discussion would be, have you talked with the clam warden and all of this? I mean, usually we get a lack of a recommendation from the fish commissioner saying, I don't know or...
I have reviewed the matter with the...
Can you come to the microphone just a here? Thanks.
I have reviewed the matter and I'm a commercial fisherman, so it's not a new endeavor by any means. I'm familiar with the area, rules and regulations, and what I'll end up doing is partnering with one of the guys to take me out so that I'm not out there on the learning curve and messing someone up.
All right. Any other discussion, Chuck? Any more?
Yeah, I'm just, as I say, without a recommendation from the board, I'm trepidatious to vote for it because it's another elected board.
Yeah.
And I would like their input, not against you doing it. This is the way we've always done these permits and...
Would you feel comfortable, Chuck, if we amended the motion to approve the license pending?
Contingent?
Contingent on hearing from the fish commissioner and the clam warden?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to approve the license, the hardship license, accepting that we hear something from the fish commissioner or clam warden that indicates that we should not do this.
Positive, yes, positive, on negative, right?
I will second that again. And I would also like to reiterate that that is their task, that is their board, that's what they do. Okay, so, you know, we the selectmen...
Why is it coming before us?
We the selectmen can override that, yes, but I always want their input.
What Chuck's saying is we usually grant the, you know, the ability for a hardship, but a lot of times they will give us a weigh-in. So I have, does everyone go along with the amended motion?
Yes.
I know we probably need to...
Vote on the amendment?
Yeah, vote on the amendment. So let's...
Chuck seconded the amendment.
All right. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So...
Sir, may I therefore coordinate that with Leslie, the town clerk, to bring a letter or help the...
Leslie would be good enough to do that, I imagine.
Game you in the right direction.
And Peter Fattino, where do you live? Which side of town?
Down on Plum Island.
All right. Peter Fattino is the clam commission chair, and you could probably get ahold of Peter. He's in the phone book or Leslie can give you his number for sure.
So if he were to call or write a...
Even on the website.
On the website.
I think so.
It is.
All right. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Okay. Not my favorite things to do. We have a nuisance dangerous dog hearing. And is everyone present that's involved in the hearing tonight?
Yes.
Carol and the chief are here. I think it's best that we hear from you guys first. Would that be the way to go about this? So we get an idea of what's going on beyond what we read?
Back in May of 2014, there was a hearing concerning the same animal. It had attacked, it had broken free from its owner and attacked the neighbor's dog. At that hearing, the board of selectmen deemed the animal to be dangerous, to be muzzled when it's outside and to be kennelled. Since that time, a kennel has been built. The animal has escaped at least once and attacked the neighbor's dog again, and we're getting complaints of the animal being in the kennel constantly barking. And the problem that we're having is the kennel is right on the property line and it's right underneath the neighbor's window. So the neighbors, the Rileys, have, and the selectmen at that initial hearing said that if the barking issue persists because the Durazios at the time were going to try a bark collar and other methods to alleviate the barking, the selectmen said that if the barking persists, to come back before the board of selectmen. So here we are. There may be a resolution to the immediacy of the situation because the owners of the dogs, Nicholas and Kimberly Durazio, are moving, purchased a home, they're closing on it at the end of the month, and the dogs will be going with them to their new house. However, it doesn't alleviate the situation with the kennel situated. And I think the animal control officer can shed a lot more light on this, and then I think both parties should stand up and talk to you first.
Quick clarification?
Yeah.
Durazio is the owner of Trooper?
Yes, Trooper, the dog.
And they're going to maybe be moving to New Hampshire and taking Trooper with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Carol?
You said pretty much everything.
How, however you want to run the hearing, do you want, who would you like to hear from first?
Carol, do you have anything to add to that because you're usually so intuitive?
No, not really. If they're going to move, you know, I don't know what else to add to that. You know, the whole problem would be rectified, but, you know, I don't know if that's a definite date.
Our issue is, the Riley's issue, when speaking to them, closings fall through and things happen.
Just about to say that. Thank you for saying it.
So why don't we hear from the Riley's first and then we'll hear from the Durazios and I'll speak again. As far as rules for this, I know it's a very emotional issue. You'll have your turn to speak. Please don't interrupt anybody on either side. Thank you.
And state your name again when you come, please, to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Riley and this is my wife, Leslie. We live at Seventeen Parker River Drive. I'm not sure if you remember when we were here last, a year ago in May.
I do, yeah.
It was a heated discussion, but one thing that the chief summed it up pretty neatly, but one thing that he did neglect to say is that although the Durazios plan to purchase a new home and close at the end of the month, which is great, which would immediately alleviate the problem, is that the Durazios don't currently live there and the dog is still there. That is part of the problem. The Durazios moved out six or eight months ago and left their animals, left their chickens and their two dogs and all of the problems behind. The harassment stopped when they went away, but the problem with the animals continued. It was discussed when we were here last that the Durazios were to build a fence along the property line that they were agreeable to, and although they wouldn't give a completion date because they were going to build it themselves, frankly, it's been a year and a half and there's 10 feet of chain link fence nailed to a tree was, that's their fence. They've also, we're told that the dog is to not be outside of the property without being muzzled. That has been ignored. The dog has been outside of the property many times without being muzzled, and we have supplied photos to Carol as well of that. It was also stated at the time that they would give a two or three week trial period with a bark collar to see if that would alleviate the problem, and it did briefly for about two or three weeks. And the dog, it's as bad as it ever is. They will put the dog out in the morning and the dog will bark. I mean, the dog was barking this morning. The dog was barking this afternoon. The dog was barking at 7:30 Sunday morning. So the problem with the dog barking hasn't gone away and, you know, we all understand that dogs bark. We have a dog and our dog barks five, 10, 15 minutes sometimes at a time, but out of consideration for all of our neighbors, we bring the dog in when we see it's getting to be a problem, we'll bring the dog in. That isn't the case with the Durazios. Sometimes it is, but most of the time, the dog is out in the kennel and there's probably no, I don't even think there's anybody at home. The dog will be in the kennel for eight, 10, 12 hours at a clip. Frankly, in my opinion, what is on animal abuse sometimes, that the dog is left in the cold, in the rain, in the dark for hours and hours and hours on end, and no wonder why it barks and says something it wants out. And when it gets out, it comes smashing, makes a beeline for our house and it smashed through another window and another screen to get into our house, to get at our dog and our kids. Last time we were here, we were told and assured by the Durazios that another attack would not happen. Well, here we are again and it did happen. I also have a letter from another neighbor here, Craig Collins at Eighteen Parker River Drive. He emailed to the chief today and he was, oh, here he is today. He just came in. Dear Chief Riley, I'm writing you in regards to the town meeting this evening. Due to a business engagement, I'm unable to attend the meeting. I wanted to voice my opinion on this matter as my family has had issues in the past that support Jerry Riley's stance. I assume it is documented that we needed to call the dog officer after having continuous dialogue with the dog's owner on the aggressive nature of their animal. My wife and two small children found it difficult and fearful to walk down our own driveway without being approached aggressively by the dog, Trooper. On one occasion, he even followed my family down our driveway to our home. The dog officer was called as a last resort to the inaction, inability, or even willingness to control their dog. I believe if this continues to be an issue, our neighborhood with so many young children and other animals on the street, I firmly believe that if no action is taken, it could result in a much larger and serious issue. And it's done by our neighbor here, Craig Collins. I also have another neighbor, Don Neal over at Sixteen Parker River Drive, is in the process of putting a letter together to send to the chief, but unfortunately he works evenings and can't be here this evening. So this is not just the Riley's problem. It's a neighborhood-wide problem here. And frankly, I want either the dog's kennel moved to the other side of their property until they relocate or relocate the dog or both. But this cannot continue. The attacks, the constant barking, and frankly, now harassment of photographs of my kids playing in the yard with the dog this afternoon, correct you? Over the last week or 10 days, every time we put our dog out, I'm out there with the dog or my kids are in the yard, Mrs. Durazio comes out with a video camera and a camera and records us for some reason. I don't know why, but I would also ask that that harassment stop immediately.
In our packet, Mr. Riley, we have, and it's with the chief's wording?
Mm-hmm.
And I want to make sure we're reading your request right so you can clarify what I'm going to read if it's not clear enough or it doesn't specify your intentions or it needs to be further expanded.
Okay.
We're reading in front of us, the complainants are asking the board to order the removal of the kennel from their property line to another area of the Durazio property where the dog will not be disturbed by their children or dog playing. Further, the complainants are asking the board to reiterate the muzzle order, which was the, you know, before you, as you had stated earlier. And then you're asking if there is a refusal to comply or a failure to comply with these orders that you're asking the board to order the dog removed from the property. Is that, in essence, what you're saying?
Yes. And the only new caveat to that is that I didn't realize that they had planned to move by the end of the month. So that being said, if we could amend that to also include a date, is it the end of March or the end of February? I don't know. But the end of whatever month it is that that dog not be housed at that premises anymore.
So in some of the mitigation after we hear from the Durazios is the fact that if the kennel is moved while you're still there, while you're going to get a house, is still in your request? Or if they are supposedly moving within a month? We'll discuss that a little further.
Yeah, we'll take that as it comes.
All right, so kind of, thank you.
Okay.
Would you like to say anything?
No, he's said it all.
Okay.
He said it well.
Yeah.
All right. So anyone from the Durazios, would you like to speak? And we're going to keep this as distilled as possible, guys. You know, just keep it to the facts.
You have to forgive me, I'm losing my voice.
That's right. Name, please, if you can.
Nicholas Durazio. I'm a former resident of Nineteen Parker River Drive. The issue here is not about an animal, as I said the last time I was here. This is a neighbor feud. If it's not a complaint about the dog, it's a complaint about a chicken coop. If it's not the chicken coop, it's the chickens. If it's not a, or a treehouse, whatever may be in the yard. We've had police officers, building inspectors, animal control officers to our property, which have all pretty much said that we're doing all that we can do. The building inspector, in fact, even said that this borderline to harassment upon the neighbor's part. As far as removing the dogs from the property, my wife and I are closing on a house that end of the month, so we do have every intention of removing the dogs from the property at that time. I am a disabled veteran, as I mentioned the last time I was here, which provides me access to the dog kennel and its location, not to mention that there is a poured concrete slab there for the animals, so it is a pretty much established shelter for the animal. The dogs do not bark. Since our last meeting, I have actually put two dog collars, or bark collars, on the collar for the animal. That dog does not bark. In the event that batteries fail or something like that or they need to be recharged, absolutely. I mean, the dog's going to bark when that happens, but that is very rare. The only reason that the dog is antagonizing will bark is when the neighbors cross over the fence line to videotape the dog or to entice the dog to do so. Once again, as I mentioned, this is a neighborly feud.
Any questions from the board?
I was not serving when this came up before. It's actually at the meeting, but not a member. I don't remember what type of dog it is.
It's shepherd, sir.
Sherman Shepherd.
Sherman Shepherd. And so you've had, there's differences of opinion, but you feel that the dog call, the bark collars have been successful in keeping your dog quiet?
Absolutely.
All right.
And like my neighbor can show you video of the dog probably barking, I can do the same with theirs. I'm a reasonable person. I, against my advice to my parents of filing harassment or against our neighbors, they don't do so. They're not that type of person. It just goes back and forth and it will not end with the dogs. Whether the kennel is removed, the dogs are removed, this will continue, I promise you. There will be one complaint after another.
And if you're able to close on the house, when would you hope to be into the new place?
The 27th we are closing. Soon as I can.
Yes, we close on the 27th, potentially, hopefully.
If we go back, Damon, to 2014, it was moved by Sleckman Mountain, seconded by Chuck Baer, and voted unanimously that when Trooper is outside of his property, he will be in the kennel area on the chain, and when off the property, he will be on a proper leash with a Baskerville muzzle. A little time was given to see if the bark collar works to stem the barking problem. Now, the problem's going to exist for us, and that's where, and I want everyone to think about this, we're going to have to go back almost to our animal control officer and the chief of police that have received these complaints because, you know, basically, we're not there. So, and we're not saying these exist or these things don't exist. So either Carol or the chief, can you kind of reinforce again where we stand from your expertise? Have there been multiple complaints? Again?
There has been two occasions where the dog has not, when he has gotten away, has not had the muzzle on, which is in violation of what you ordered.
Okay.
Good-looking boy. May I?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. They had said you're not living in the property right now? Is that solved?
That's correct, sir. I'm currently living in Beverly and a majority of the time now, the animals are actually with me. I only drop them off when I'm unable to watch them.
So you're renting the house?
I'm sorry?
You're renting the house to other people?
No, sir. I'm living in Beverly, in the process of purchasing a house in New Hampshire.
His folks live at the house.
Okay, all right, all right.
And I, sorry, I saw one of those photographs and I believe both of those photographs are both of the instances.
I was just concerned who was taking care of the dog. That's where I was going with this. I was concerned who was taking care of the dog, why he was still there. Okay, thank you for that.
Like I was just, I was saying, I saw one of the photographs you just had, and I believe they are, both are the occasions where the dog has gotten off the leash, to include the original hearing we were here for. The dog is always muzzled when he's off. The dog is always muzzled when he's off property, which is almost nonexistent. We don't even bring him off the property to walk him, and he is always leashed on the property.
So, the property where you live now, in Beverly, do you own that, or do you rent?
Neither, ma'am. I'm actually living in a, I'm not being charged rent at this time. It's a family property.
Okay. I just don't, I don't understand, is there any chance the dog can stay with you in Beverly?
At this time, no.
Why would that be?
To make the owners happy for allowing me to stay there rent-free.
I see.
What, not that it should change what we really decide, but it could have some influence on the decision. What is your exact timeline within the confines of your knowledge of when you will be taking the dogs off the property?
Assuming everything goes well, we close on the property on the 27th.
Of?
This month.
This month, yes, sir.
This month.
Yes, sir. And as soon as I possibly can, move the first piece of furniture, and the dogs will be going with me.
Senator Riddell, I have a leash.
Come on up, come on up.
Introduce yourself again, please.
My name is Dave Derazio. I'm the owner of the property. If it were to help your decision, I have a leash that I can put the dog on in the front yard and not use the kennel at all. But as far as the kennel is concerned, it's a poured slab kennel enclosed, all right? I think that Nick is going to take that kennel with him, depending on the way the property goes, but we'll see what happens there. In the meantime, like I said, I can put the dog on a leash without any problem and not use the kennel at all.
What would, what would the animal control officer, how do you feel that would be? Do you think that would be more of a danger?
I'd be a little fearful that he might get away, that he might get off of the leash. I've seen the, I haven't seen the leash.
Oh, you have, okay. You're welcome to come by. It's like, what, four inch, half inch chain?
But what is the clip on the end?
Stainless steel.
No, but I mean, does it have a cattle snap on it?
No, actually, it is a, geez, I'm not terminology of it. It's more or less a U-ring, and it's actually a swivel you screw it on, so it is secure. We did have one, which is one of these instances where it did clip, and that broke, it wasn't strong enough, surprisingly.
Would he be, would he have his muzzle on though, while he's out there?
Carol, let me ask you a question, because we've got multiple issues, you know, where he is and where he isn't, where he should be muzzled, the thickness of the leash, and all those things. But I'd like a little clarification, maybe just starting with the barking issue. I think I know what a bark collar is. Can you explain what a bark collar is, and why the bark, no, let Carol do it, and why didn't it work? And then we'll ask, you know, are they, are they susceptible to not working?
Some dogs are very bright, and they learn. One bark, they can get away with. Two barks, they get zapped. And so for a while, they, after a while, they figure it out. But they do get zapped when they bark. But it's intermittent, like if he barked, he gets zapped, but if he barked again, he might not till about the third bark after that. Eventually, they get used to them. Depends on the brand. There are certain brands out there that are better than others.
But I guess my question is, if, if they were, Derazios were paying attention to the collar, and the batteries are up to speed, do they usually work?
They do work.
Yep.
Oh, they do work, but they need to be plugged in each night to be recharged.
That's what I kind of wanted to know. All right.
Before you sit down again, Carol, you're more familiar with this situation, the property. Do you have any recommendations on how to resolve this issue, so we do not put a burden on the Derazios, but can alleviate the concerns of their neighbors?
I think the only thing that would alleviate the concern of the neighbor, and I'm not speaking for them, I'm speaking for myself if I was in that position, and that would be to walk the dog on a leash with a muzzle on and otherwise be in the house.
The Riley's would like to speak, so can you guys sit down a second? They'll come up, and we'll get a feel for what they'd like to say.
If I may.
They'd like to speak again, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
As far as leashes and clips and their plans to keep the dog under wraps, again, I mean, we heard all of this the last time we were here, and we were assured the dog wouldn't get away. So much for that. The dog did get away, and it's gotten away before. Again, it has smashed through my window. I don't think you understand the gravity of the situation. There is 110-pound German Shepherd running into, smashing his head through the window of my house, on my property, to get at my dogs and kids. This is not just a matter of barking. Now, you can roll your eyes and laugh all you want, but this is a fact, right?
This speaks for itself.
And as far as Mr. Derazio saying the dog doesn't bark, well, he hasn't lived on the property since April, so how does he know? He doesn't, okay? The dog was barking today, wasn't he, when I came up?
It's yours, sir.
When I was talking to you this morning, the dog was barking. Is that correct?
Comment to us, please, not to each other.
As I pulled in this afternoon, Mr. Derazio Senior was in the driveway, and the dog was barking loud and clear. And I went over to say something to him, and the dog was barking. Correct? Again, this afternoon, when Mrs. Derazio arrived home from work, she stopped at her mailbox, took out her camera to take pictures of my kids playing in the front yard with our dog. The ironic part of that was, their dog was in the backyard barking at the exact moment she was trying to build some case against us for our dog playing in our own yard. So, as I said before, this is not just a Riley situation. Mr. Collins is here. Mr. Neal would be happy to speak to any of you during the day, as he's home during the days. This is not just the Riley's. We live directly next door, so we're the ones that deal with it more than any of the other neighbors, but it is not just the Riley's. And as far as the dog's not going to get away again, it's going to get away again, because it has, right? So, that's what I just, I just want to say that, you know, we talked about not burdening the Derazios. Well, what about not burdening the Riley's and the rest of the neighborhood like we have been for the last three years?
And I think what, I think what Damon, I'm not going to put words in Damon's mouth, but I think what the board has to understand is if Trooper does, if we don't come up with a solution after a complaint in 2014, and now another complaint, if we don't come up with a good solution, then maybe, well, Carol will have some input in, and that dog really injures a child or another dog, we didn't probably do our job. So, we've got to try to figure this out the best way we can. And these things are never easy. I think Chuck and I have been through this before. I don't think anyone else on the board has, so they're never easy.
I understand it puts, it's a predicament.
We all have dogs, you know, we're just, I mean, so.
I just want to ask.
Let me ask you a question dead-on, without any ambiguity, and don't put emotions over the top on it. Do you feel that when the dog, which is not acceptable, broke through and put his paws and nose and tried to get in your window, do you feel that if that dog came in your yard, he would bite your dog and the kids?
I have no doubt in my mind.
Okay.
And that is why we have to leave a baseball bat on our front porch, and that's the only reason the dog even left last time, because we had to bash him in the snot with the baseball bat.
All right. So that's more information from my board.
Yep. Other neighbors?
We'll get, no, go ahead.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Is that it? Is that what, everything?
You know, I just ask that, you know, the board put themselves in my shoes. I'm trying to protect my family, and the rest, and other people in the neighborhood have expressed problems as well. I'm doing the best to protect my family.
When did this occur?
This occurred last September.
Okay. We're going to let them speak one more time anyway, so you guys kind of get back, so they can come up. Now, you've got a, what's your first name?
Nicholas.
All right, Nicholas. You've got to take and explain to us. You've got to give us, or help us with a solution, because when we have multiple complaints, and maybe multiple witnesses, and it seems your, the complaints are against you, and we start to have fear for our dog and child's safety, the board is going to lock up, so you've got to take and probably help us with a decision that alleviates some of this problem.
I'm having trouble on how to do that, as in, you just heard my dog would attack their children and animal. Their kids play with my dog prior to this family feud. Where do I go with this?
Can we hear from him now?
I'll take the responsibility. I'll put the dog on a leash. I'll walk the dog. All right. What are we, two, three weeks away from passing papers?
Does the dog spend nights in the house?
I'm sorry?
Does the dog spend nights in the house?
Yes.
Do you feel pretty good about the closing?
Yes, I do, absolutely.
Seeing as we're talking like two and a half weeks, would it be unreasonable for the dog to spend time in the house and get walked when he needs to do his business?
I will alleviate the problem. The problem now is the kennel. It's a poured slab, and I can see no reason without the dog in there to change the kennel. The topography of the land that I live on is really not conducive to moving that.
Didn't you just say the kennel's going to be leaving with the dog?
Pardon?
Did you not say the kennel would be leaving with the dog?
He spoke a little before his turn there. I have a pretty good amount of property that I'm purchasing, which I won't need a kennel for.
I'm referring to it as a kennel. I can use it at carport.
Move a little bit closer to the.
I'm sorry, I can use the same area as a carport. Doesn't make any difference to me, once the dog goes.
How big of an area is this kennel?
The kennel? 10 by 10.
With, how tall?
10, 12 feet.
What? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, the fencing?
Yeah.
Fencing is a little over 7 feet, I think, possibly.
Do you feel, do you feel unthreatened when the dog is in the kennel? Is the kennel adequate to hold the dog?
Unthreatened, yeah, if the dog is in the kennel, yes.
Except for barking.
We feel safe.
Except for barking.
It's the barking issue.
But if I have on a leash, there should be no problem.
Carol, what are the types of muzzles that stop barking and still allow the dog to breathe?
It won't stop the dog from barking. A muzzle will not stop the dog from barking.
So. I would like to alleviate this problem completely, because I know it's not going to stop if I remove the dogs from the property. Even when the dog's in a kennel, which neighbors just said they feel safe with, the animal control officer is getting complaints, and the police are getting complaints, that they're scared the dog's in the kennel. Like I said, this won't, this isn't going to stop, once I remove the dogs from the property, or if my parents purchase another animal, or wherever the dog is chained up to, in the driveway, it's not going to stop.
Right now, all we have before us is what we're hearing right now. So that's all we can, we can move on. We can't project into the future.
I would just like it to be at least noted at this time.
Yeah.
For the next time.
Off-the-wall question. Don't we have a Dogs for Veterans program already going?
My son and his wife have a, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's all right, we're doing all right.
Got your turn.
They're in a rather difficult position, because they're both in law enforcement, they're both police officers. One in Beverly, one is in Manchester, New Hampshire. So, things being what they are, I volunteered to keep the dogs while they found the house and did that. Now, everything is consummating, and like I said, I can take care of the dogs for a couple of weeks.
I'm ready for some sort of motion, so there can be some solid discussion, unless the motion is still untangible, and then we'll continue to ask. Carol's coming our way? No?
Can I have one second?
Yep, yep.
The Riley's said it would be okay for them until they close on their house to do what I suggested. The dog stay in the house. When he walks the dog, it's walked on a secured leash with a muzzle on, they, because even if it got loose, it couldn't hurt anyone with the muzzle on. I'll lend a mine, I have a Baskerville. I'd be willing to lend it to them.
That's very good of you.
Now, can I just haul it down back and say?
We're fine with that. Provided there is a firm date for the dog to be relocated, a firm date. Not a day after, a week after, or it fell through, or any other excuse, a firm date that the dog is on.
So, it would be to our board, thinking that there's a day or two in between the 27th, when there's always logistical problems? I mean, it's just nature, it's just the course of things, so.
I'd rather not set an end date.
Say it again?
I'd rather we just set a motion that says the Trooper will not be left unattended outside, he will be walked on a leash and muzzled until he's able to permanently leave the property, because as we all know, things happen, and if we set an end date, then, you know, on the 28th of February, does it have 28th?
29th.
You know, whatever it is, beginning of March, what we've said would expire, and if things get delayed for a week, we don't want the order being no longer standing. So I would say that, you know, in fact, I'll do it. I move that.
Damon, I really think we should put a date on it.
Make a motion, and then we'll discuss the motion.
Okay. I move that Trooper no longer be kennelled outdoors, and only be allowed out on a leash while muzzled.
From the house.
Yeah.
When he's not in the house. Now Chuck, you had, make it, someone second.
Okay, I'll second.
And now discussion.
So, does Trooper, does he have, is he, when you walk him on a leash, does he have a collar, or is he in a harness?
In the one time that I walked him, he was muzzled, does not like that muzzle, he barely walks with it.
Well, he has to get used to it.
So we don't walk him off the property at all.
No, he never.
So, I think what we're asking, and I would need clarification from this, is that when he's even on the property, he needs to be muzzled and leashed. Is that correct, Carol?
That was my intention, so that if he got loose, he wouldn't head towards their house.
Okay. My point is the reason for the agreement was an end date, okay? Other than that, there was no agreement. Am I wrong on that?
You're correct.
Okay. So, I reiterate, we should put.
Come on up, real quick. Guys, give me a little space.
The reason I'm being so adamant about a date is that we've left things open-ended before, such as completion of a fence, that never happened, and other things that never have, bark collars and end to the barking. Things have been left open-ended with no firm plan or not followed up on, and they've been let go.
Here we are.
And the fence is the perfect example. That's why I'm adamant about a date. Pick any date, just give me a date. Make it March 15th. Give them two extra weeks. I don't care, but I want to know when the dog is going to be gone.
Yeah, if you want to amend the motion to give it a date?
Please.
Go ahead.
You can do it.
Yeah, go ahead. It's your motion, so I'd like you to.
So.
Reiterate the whole thing again. The dog's to be kept in the house, and when he's outside the house.
Trooper's not to be, so I'll amend the motion so that Trooper's not to be outside the house unattended. When he is outside, that he is to be walked on a secured lead with a muzzle.
On his property.
On his property, until the end of March.
15th.
You think 15th? Okay, 15th of March.
Second to your amendment.
Any more discussion about the amended motion? Can, go ahead, Alicia. Can, go ahead, Alicia.
I'm going to rely on you again, Carol, on this. Can you assure us that the kids are going to be safe and the other dog is going to be safe if this is what we do?
That's a question she probably can't...
I, I can't guarantee anything. All I know is if the dog has a muzzle on him, if he got away and it was put on properly, he can't bite anyone or he can't bite another dog.
Right.
Excuse me. Is there any other discussion? Chief?
The only, the only concern I would have is if the closing fell through and March 15th rolled around and your order expires. What happens then? Dog or back in the kennel?
Yeah.
So that's, that's the only question I would have for the board.
And I think at that time, we'll be back in our lap, probably.
Okay.
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think if it, if it falls through, the dog, you're going to have to find another home for the dog.
Not in the motion, though. That's why I didn't want to put an end date on the motion.
It would be back in our lap.
It would have to come before us for another decision unless we want to change the motion again.
Thought that's what we were doing.
Well, if we, if you want to add to the motion...
Well, what are your thoughts? What are your thoughts? Do you think that it's...
I hate all of this stuff. I don't want to do it.
I agree with you.
Either way, not against, you know, this...
I feel like I'm, I have to protect the dog and I feel like I have to protect their dog and their kids and I'm not a big fan of having a dog tied up on a lead, on a collar, outside, muzzled because it can't protect itself. God forbid. I know, but that was one of the options that was given, so I, I...
No, no.
No.
No, before. Was not now. It's going to stay inside or it's going to be walked and that's it. So I'm, I'm looking at it from, from all aspects here. I, I want to protect the children. I want to protect both dogs.
So in other words, Damon's amended motion with the date attached is that the kennel is no longer going to be used, that the dog is either in the house or walked with a muzzle outside?
With an end date of March 15th and the dog has to find another home on March 15th?
Well, that's a different motion.
Well, let's amend it so to make it sound like that.
That's what I thought. The end date was four. Yes, I do.
Well, the, the end date would take and do this and you can't surmise that it would mean the dog would be taken away. You can have a motion to amend that.
I stand corrected.
At an end date would mean it would be back before us again. So if you want to amend the amendment and take care of them even having to come back with us, that's a different layer. It's a different motion. I have no issue with you guys thinking about that, but we should have some discussion with that.
I would like to have two separate motions. One, to have the dog on the lead and another to create an end date. I'm, I'm extremely uncomfortable with telling people they have to get rid of their dog.
I don't want to do that.
And so...
But that's in essence what you want to do.
No, I didn't, I just said the dog can't stay in this property. I'm not telling them to get rid of it.
Are selectmen aware of the change in state law that says selectmen no longer can order a dog off property? I just covered another dog trial.
Fabulous.
I was going to say that we can't, as a board, you can't order a dog off, off property. When we wrote this, it was with the understanding of the actual dog's owners, Nick and Kim Derazio were moving and would take the dog with them. So they are the actual owners of the dog.
Chief or Jen or whatever, I got to know what that means. We can't order a dog off of the property?
Right. I would have to talk to town council where we...
Yeah, what are we supposed to do? That doesn't make quite sense to me. No.
You can order the dog destroyed as your final...
That's where I was going.
You can't take a dangerous dog and move it to somewhere else to be a dangerous dog.
Our intention was never to have the dog put down. That is not...
No, what we're trying to do is, it is a little, it's an epiphany now. This is new information. And Jen, Jen, Jen mentioned this and I think maybe what the law is doing is to make it sometimes more cut and dried when selectmen are trying to arbitrate these things because it adds a new layer. If the thing is enough of a problem that we're going through stuff like this, then the outcomes would be destroy the dog. Carol, are you getting up to talk?
I have an, I have an answer to your question.
Good, great.
The reason you can't order it out of town is because you're giving someone else the problem, another community the same problem. That's why they don't want you. The state does not want us to have a dog go from one place to another.
Okay, so I say that we don't need to amend anything. I just, can you read what your motion was?
The first one?
The one that you amended, to not include a date.
Yeah, so I move the trooper no longer be left unattended outside and that when he is walked, he is walked with a muzzle and a leash.
And if, well, if something happens and it comes off, then will we just be back here again?
We don't have a second on that yet, but...
I think we, we did. Chuck seconded the first one.
On the first emotion.
We didn't get into the second one because of the...
What that motion will do is point of discussion from the chair is it's a change of behaviors. We've added a layer of change of behaviors for the Derazios. If the problem then continues to exist and there's a complaint that are valid complaints and there's no way to alleviate it, that could leave us with that highest level of scrutiny.
Could leave us no other option.
So at least where, now, do you have, I'll let you come to the microphone to discuss very quickly, please, your thoughts on where we stand with the original...
Yeah, no.
Motion.
I, I understand the, the motion and, and we're fine with all of it as I...
The original motion?
Yes, the original motion that the dog, as Damon has stated, that the dog muzzled, leashed, that it is not left in the kennel and is in, well, is inside as, as possible. I mean, I don't want to be inhumane and not let the dog get fresh air. That's not what we're trying to, to, we're just trying to get some peace and quiet and feel safe in our own house.
Can you guys accomplish this?
I see no reason why not. It's not a matter of the, the rest of your life. It's a matter of a couple of weeks.
Right, so in you, it is your intent to bring the dog with you eventually, right? Okay.
All right. That's, again, though, and I understand the predicament with this date thing, but that's my, my hesitation is that word eventually. Eventually could mean August.
Well, then you'll be back here and I don't think you want to put us in that spot that we have to make a decision.
Can we have Nick Derazio's word? I, I want some assurance before I leave here tonight that this is going to come to an end and whether it's going to...
Well, let's do this, Nick, if you don't mind. The thought is, come up to the microphone if you can. I guess I have to ask you point blank, is the owner of the dog? We have a motion before us. The motion is different. The motion is a little more onerous in the fact that it, it causes different behaviors for your family or yourself or whoever is there when the dog is there. It does add certain layers of protection and noise abatement. Are you going to be able to, or will your family be able to accomplish the motion that's before us to alleviate the problem we have in front of us tonight?
We can accomplish any motion that you pass tonight, absolutely.
All right.
Whether I'm comfortable with it or not is besides the point. But if you don't mind, sir, could you go over the motion one more time?
Damon, go ahead.
The trooper not left, be left unattended outside and that when he is walked, he be leashed and muzzled.
Which means when he's not outside, leashed and muzzled, he's in your folks' house.
Yeah.
He's not in the kennel.
Understood. We can do that.
Okay. All right. You agree?
Any, any...
Yes, sir.
We have a second. The motion's been made. Any more discussion on the issue? All those in favor?
Hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank both parties. Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you, thank you.
Wow.
Never wanted to be in a position where you're going to put a dog down.
Well, you have too old to learn something, huh? Good grief.
That, um, we'll get, we'll get more information on what Jen has told us tonight for sure and it certainly adds another layer to these dog hearings, so...
Well, the police should get it.
Guys, can we have discussion out in the hall so we can proceed? Do you want us anymore, chief? Anything else you need us for?
Yes, he's next on the agenda.
I know, the next part of this, but we're okay on what we've done. All right, so maybe on a lighter note, the chief is going to explain to us a really good thing tonight and it's going to be that we're going to recognize animal control officer Carol LaRocque for work she's done. Chief?
I'm going to let Carol explain to you the work that she's done, but I, I wanted to recognize Carol LaRocque for going above and beyond the call of duty in her job description. And she's taken the, the issue of elderly pet owners to heart and she realizes that a lot of elderly pet owners can't afford to care for their animals and as such, a lot of these animals are being destroyed just for lack of financing or they can't afford to get, have no way, no way to get those animals to doctor's appointments and vet appointments. And Carol has really stepped up and she started the Greater Newbury Elder Pet Fund to assist these elders in need and I can't do it justice. I'll let Carol explain it to you, so...
Thanks, Carol. Thank you very much.
And I'll make it quick, gentlemen.
Next, good.
And ladies.
And ladies.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you for correcting me. Thank you, chief.
I'm Carol LaRocque, animal control officer of the town of Newbury and also the founder of the Elder Pet Fund. I'm going to quickly go through some of this. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. Our program goals are to support elder pet owners so they may reap the benefits of pet ownership without suffering financial hardship, to reduce the unnecessary euthanization of a pet companion solely due to financial hardship. And boy, have I been getting calls lately from, from the elders. Elder people have older dogs. Older dogs have a lot of issues. And we've been footing a lot of vet bills, but I can't say no to them. To eliminate the challenge facing some elder pet owners trying to provide for their pets' needs at the expense of their own well-being. I went into someone's house. She didn't look good to bring her food and I said, "Are you eating okay? Are you doing..." "Yeah, I'm all set. I'm fine." I got up. I know it's not proper, but I got up and I walked and I opened a refrigerator. Gentlemen, ladies, there was nothing in the refrigerator and I mean nothing. And she had two things in the freezer. I went out and I bought her groceries and stuff that she needed. This happens over and over again. I get called into a situation. You have no idea some of these situations I've gone into. And it's very difficult for me. I don't know how these social workers do it. I, I, it kills me when they call me and they tell me, you know, I need help. My husb, I just got a call a week ago that this woman's husband is, got a real bad heart condition and their dog is just dropping weight and not eating. I paid for her to take it to the vet because she said, "If this dog dies because we cannot afford to give it attention, my husband will die along with it." Unfortunately, the dog cannot be saved because it has a medical issue, but they're all right with that because they, they know that it's not because of them.
They tried.
They tried. So there is a big need out there and some people say, "Oh, it's only dogs." It's not the dogs. It's the people. Sometimes that's their only friend. They have no other people. They have no family. That is their family member. The service area that, well, it started out with Newbury and Byfield, but we are now in Newbury, Byfield, Newbury Port, Georgetown, Amesbury, Ipswich and other surrounding communities as needed. The program operation, it's in partnership with the Council on Aging and other local organizations. At-risk elders identified as needs evaluated. I get called from different organizations letting me know who needs. Donations are collected at area collection sites and currently stored at the Newbury Highway Barn and thank you for my space at the Highway Barn. Deliveries of food to clients are made on a monthly basis. Cash donations are managed by the Elder Pet Treasurer, Leslie Haley. And I needed someone that I could really trust and she stepped up and now Leslie, who is our town clerk, is taking care of, keeping track of all the money. A hundred percent, it says, a hundred percent of all donations go to meet the needs of the elder clients and their pets. That is almost true. Ninety-nine point nine percent because I need the money to do those brochures you're holding in your hand. But otherwise, it all goes to them. The Elder Pet Program is incorporated under the auspices of the Women's Fellowship First Presbyterian Church for the purpose of getting a 501(c)(3). I needed to be able to go under someone's umbrella so people could write off donations and, because we have some that give us substantial donations. That's what keeps us afloat. And the area, I've worked with all the area veterinarians. You have a list of them all in your pamphlet, in your flyer, and they help support our program by establishing payment plans. They'll let us put like a hundred dollars down on someone's bill and we make fifty dollars payments or if we have the money, then we'll make more. I'd like to, if it's all right with you, just like four supporters that really need recognition and that Central Congregational Church has given us thirty-seven hundred dollars to the program.
Wow.
Old South Church has given us thirty-five hundred dollars to the program. We're very grateful for the support of the community. Everybody has really been great and in particular, the early and continuing support of Dr. Grillo and the staff of Newbury Animal Hospital. Not only were the first to join the effort, they continue to work with the fund and assist at-need pet owners in obtaining food, health care for their beloved pets. Linda Garcia, owner of Abraham's Bagel in Newbury Port, was one of the first businesses to jump on board and they have been great. And over the past several years, donations collected at Abraham's Bagel have exceeded donations collected at all other sites in the area. Linda and her staff continue to support the fund by collecting and raising the money. In 2013, the program was still in its early infancy when twenty year, when twelve-year-old Sydney Noyes heard about the program from her mother who worked for the town of Newbury. When the town came to plan her 13th birthday party, Sydney told her parents that instead of personal gifts, she wanted guests to donate food and supplies to the Elder Pet Fund. Thanks to the generosity of this remarkable woman, the funds received were very sizable in donation. Now, the happiest part is, as of today, are you ready for this? What started as a hundred or two hundred dollars, right? This is what I was presented today as, I just gave Leslie two checks to deposit. She says, "Carol, do you realize how much money?" I says, "No, I don't. You're taking care of it." She says, "Try this. Fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars we have in our account." You can do anything if you really want to. Thank you.
I don't get to do this often enough, but the Newbury Police Department is issuing Carol LaRocque a letter of commendation for her work with the Newbury Elder Pet Fund and it states, "Whereas you as Newbury Animal Control Officer..." And it states, "Whereas you as Newbury Animal Control Officer identified a community need in assisting elders in need with caring for their pets, whereas upon identifying this need founded the Greater Newbury Elder Pet Fund to accept donations to purchase pet food supplies and veterinary care for elders in need, whereas you, on your own time and at your own expense, administer the Greater Newbury Pet Fund, purchase food and supplies as well as transport clients and their pets to appointments, whereas you as a representative of the Newbury Police Department and the town of Newbury work above and beyond your job expectations to serve the citizens of the Greater Newbury area. Be hereby known to all, this ninth day of February in the year 2016, the Newbury Police Department acknowledges and offers its sincerest appreciation to Animal Control Officer Carol LaRocque for her selfless actions in assisting the elderly." So Carol?
Thank you so much.
Carol, thanks. That's all I have. Thank you, Chief.
There we go.
Entertainment license. I don't have it.
Okay. Thanks again, Carol. We would, we need to review and approve and sign a 2016 entertainment license. Is everything in order?
Everything.
Okay. And it is Mark Ferrari from Island Grill.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I just, let me.
Sure.
It's good, but I, I'm going to have trouble really getting to the page probably. I got, I'm lucky, I got it.
Oh, you are lucky.
Mark Ferrari from Island Grill, Inc., just so the board knows, and everything is in order, the Palm Island Grill is sprinkled and everything else. So, but it's 2016, so you know what we're doing. It's every Sunday afternoon from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And 2016, the last Friday of each month from six o'clock to 9:00 p.m., it's Thursday, March 17th, 2016, St. Patrick's Day, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So when we review, approve, and sign, that's what we're doing. So I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Either Damon or Chuck, I'm just going to run to the bathroom. Can you review, approve, and sign the 2016 business license renewals? Can you go down the names? And I'll be back by then. And if there's a hold, like we always do, we'll put a hold on them and then make a motion.
Stephen J.
Bandolian.
Bandolian.
Oh.
Bandolian.
All right.
Old Newbury Boat Company. U.S. Number One Auto Marines, Stephen Bandolian. Kyla and Lara Gross, DBA Diamond. Is it Ellen? Diamonds in the Rough, From the Rough. Ellen Cashman, doing business as LaBrosch Ranch. Seaco Cycle, Kevin, how do you say Kevin's last name?
Mazani.
Mazani. Fort, Newbury Tornpike. Mahomet Ah.
Almadani.
Almadani, shouldn't have done this. DBA M-Pet, Inc., thirty-five, thirty-four, High Road. And that's, that's all of them.
Yep. Motion to approve all.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Done?
She's done?
Yeah.
She's slurring names as bad as I do it.
Oh, much worse. Don't you worry about that.
Okay, where do we stand? Is the motion to be made, approved, and, or where do we stand?
And voted, yep.
Okay, great.
Out to a vote to sign, no regard.
This is, we have to make a separate motion for this, even though it is a warrant. It's vote to sign Town of Newbury March 1st, 2016, a warrant for the presidential primary. Are we going to do that now? Ellen's going to be at the end, but we'll make the motion now.
Yeah, so moved?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that issue? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This is to vote and approve and sign the ADCC Form 43, we've done these before, liquor license, oh seventy-nine, four zero 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 two, 2016, change of officers, directors of the Old Town Country Club. Marsh Ave, Newbury Mass. It's much the same as we went through with the old Newbury Golf Course, same thing. Do, we need to specifically, I can't remember, but do we need to specifically word the motion?
You can vote to approve the offices and directors change and vote to sign Form 43.
All right, so there's two motions. Can we do it in one, Ellen?
We'll just make it two, keep it simple.
Good, make it easy.
So. Vote to approve the change, I move that we vote to approve the change of officers.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor or discussion?
Good, I'm with you guys. And, and any discussion on the issue? All those in favor? Aye. Next motion.
I vote that we sign Form 43. Or move that we sign For, Form 43?
Second. Chuck?
Yes, second, sorry. Out to lunch, yeah.
Chuck said he's been working for two days straight, so he's going, said he would be tired tonight, so. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 61a, we have before us a, which is going to take a motion, we have to set a public hearing date of April 12th, 2016, for the notice and intent to sell for other uses, date 21, 2016, for 323 High Road, Assessors Map R5, Lot 18, and the owner is Joseph Story. So we need a motion to set the public hearing.
I move we set the public hearing for April 12th, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
What does this entail?
Same thing we've been through before.
It's in 61a, and he wants to sell.
Okay, all right, all right, very good. Same thing we just went through.
Okay.
Hundred and twenty days and. Any discussion on the motion? All those?
Just, have all the boards and committees been notified that need to weigh in on this?
Not yet. We set the public hearing date, then I'll notify them.
And you'll notify them, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we have all their information before the public hearing.
Guess what?
Ah. You thought we stole it from you. Sorry, that was all I, I wanted to ask about that.
Any more discussion from anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're entering into old business. And this might take some clarification, but I think we'll be okay. As per Mass. General Law 5115, we need to choose and vote, the people are in your packet, to vote to appoint a new member to the Board of Registrazers to fill the seat vacated by the resignation of Nancy Jones. Recommendations made by the chairs of the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee are in your packet. Probably one of the questions that someone would have, at least I had it, does everyone know what the Board of Registrazers is? So I didn't, and, and Ellen helped me to understand what it was, so let me read a little bit about it, and then we'll understand also what they do. Chapter 51, Section 15. "Asseptus provided in Chapter 17, they shall be in every city other than one, having a Board of Election Commissioners or an Election Commission in every town. A Board of Registrazers vote is consisting of a city or town clerk and three other persons who shall, in a city, be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the alderman, in a town, by the writing signed by the selectman and filed by the town clerk. When a Board of Registrazers is first appointed, the registrar shall be appointed in February or March for terms respectively of one or two or three years, beginning with April 1st following. In February or March of every year, the original appointment, one registrar shall be appointed for the term of three years, beginning." So each appointment shall be made in the town by the selectman or by the appointing authority from the list submitted to the town by the Town Committee or a political party, from the members of which position is to be filled. Containing the names of three enrolled members of such party residing in the town, selected by a majority of votes, are a duty called a meeting, when a quorum is present. The only other thing that was of interest that in no case shall a clerk, shall in no case shall an appointment be made as to cause a board to have more than two members, including city clerk or town clerk of the same political party. Now, what do these people do? And just remember, right now, we have one of each. We have a Democrat and a Republican. So it doesn't matter, I guess, if we choose a Democrat or a Republican. The Board of Registrazers signs petitions. It looks at nomination papers. It can answer residency questions. It would be the people that were there on a recount. And also in some towns, but I guess Leslie does that completely herself now, they can help with the census. So is there any questions that you guys have with me that I might be able to answer? Are we pretty much in understanding of what we need to do?
So we need to appoint one person?
One person, and we have that list. Have you got it in front of you guys?
Yes.
You found it?
It's kind of towards the back. It's right in front of the vacancy, Town of Newbury, big letters, Town of Newbury.
Yep.
Tell me when everyone's there. Are any of these people present tonight? So.
Jeff, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On that sheet that you were just reading from? It says it can only be one. Read it again. Can I see it?
All right, where it gets handy is, and there's right now one of each, that in no case shall an appointment be wa, made as to cause a board to have more than two members, including the city or town clerk of the same political party. And I guess we have one of each.
So we have three, we have, it's a Board of Three, correct?
It's a Board of Three. We have two sitting now.
Two sitting now, and then one of each.
With Leslie as town clerk.
And what's the clerk? What does she register as?
I don't know.
Unenrolled.
She's unenrolled.
Throw an independent in there, make it a.
That's the town clerk. She's unenrolled.
Unenrolled, although, so that it wouldn't cause this disparity. Thank you. So you've got to remember now, we don't have these people here tonight. They're still asking us to choose one. Does anyone know any of these people and can speak to knowing those? I don't really know any of these folks.
I just know Carrie.
Okay.
Actually, Linda, you're here, can, no, you're not, Linda.
Heidi.
So anyway.
I'm sorry.
The board can, we don't have any letters in here either. We could ask for letters from these folks, or we could just choose a name. You know, so I'm open for decisions. Is there any protocols that you guys know that I don't know?
This is the way you've done it in the past.
Is just choose a name. So.
You can certainly.
Why don't we ask for some letters and/or have someone show up?
It has to be.
One will show.
There's a deadline.
I think we're pushing a deadline.
Presidential primary.
Of course.
Yep. I'm smiling because I don't know anyone, and it probably will show Republican, a Democrat. So anyway, someone make a motion. Let's get it done.
How do you feel about Carrie? Since she's the only person on the list that I know is.
We'll put you right on the line.
Do we have to make a motion, or do we? I move that we, we nominate or appoint?
Appoint.
Appoint Carrie Boyd.
To the Board of Registrazers to fill a vacancy.
To, as of, to the Board of Registrazers to fill a vacancy.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Is there any discussion?
I really wish we had information about these people.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Only because I know her. I only know her, that's it.
Well done.
Thank you very much, Alicia.
You're welcome. Anytime, don't mention it.
Now, we've got correspondence. And Marshall's not here. So let me just see if I can find that piece of correspondence and, and I will read it.
Finding those right there.
Okay, as we know, okay, capital planning prioritizes and sets things for us and, and, and that are going to be general things that need to be done in terms of financing and going forward and giving us a heads up. So capital planning, the chair is Marshal Jeswison, and the chair has written this to our board. And then I'm going to ask Tracy or Ellen, does this trigger a motion to do this tonight? Or is it going to become part of another process at another time? But anyway, let me read the letter. Selectmen Town of Newbury, it's Byfield Grange Hall. Dear Selectmen, CPC has received a request for repairs to the Byfield Grange Hall, specifically replacement of the windows in that building. I have reviewed the lease between Byfield Community Arts Center and the town, and have noted that the town is responsible under the terms of the lease for this expense. The CPC feels that the selectmen should determine the status of this building going forward at the next lease renewal date. Specifically, that capital planning sees no reason for the town to subsidize the operation of town property for the benefit of a private nonprofit corporation. The precedent for this opinion is in the terms of the lease that was negotiated with the Yellow School for the Arts whose lease included the Grange Hall. In that lease, the town was absolved of all costs for the property, including capital improvements, capital repairs, and maintenance. The CPC recommends the selectmen determine what option will be in the best interest of the town at the termination of the existing lease. In the meanwhile, we will recommend funding the requested repairs in accordance with the term of the existing lease. Is this meant to be informational at this time?
It's meant to be informational, but we, the, the problem keeps coming up year after year after year. When I first came to Newbury, the facilities were in significant disrepair. I've made it a priority, working with the managers here, to make sure that we take care of the property that we currently own. We own that building, and we've known for a number of years that the windows need to be repaired and replaced.
And that's why we put a roof on it.
We put a roof on it. Again, in consultation with the facilities manager, we, we have a capital plan. We know how to maintain the buildings appropriately. But for whatever reason, and I don't know the history, but when we come to repairs to this building, it always seems to be an issue. And people don't seem to want to make the repairs. And, and I, I guess the conversation that I've participated in at the CPC has been, okay, what's the long-term plan for this building? Does the town want to keep it? If we want to keep it, then we need to maintain it. If we don't want to maintain it, let's not keep it. You know, so you, you, I guess we've got to decide what we want to do with that building and make a commitment to, to keep it in good repair.
So my only question is for the meeting in real time tonight because it's not the end of the lease when we'll have to deal with that situation. So we're not making a motion at this time to repair the windows. This is informational.
There, it, there will be an article that will come before you for the town meeting, asking for funding to repair it.
And then we'll make the motion at that point.
May I?
Go ahead.
Okay. That building was built by the Order of Mechanics back in the late 1800s. They had their meetings there until they disbanded. The Grange took it over by an executive order from the Order of Mechanics, okay? The Grange ran it for many years. They disbanded, gave it to the town as a gift for them to maintain it. The fire department uses it for emergency access. We did for many. The fire department uses it for emergency access, we did for many, many years. The, uh, community arts are not the only people who use it.
Understood.
Okay, the Boy Scouts use it, the Girl Scouts meet there, there are many, many other meetings. We may have to use that building at some point in time if we can't find another thing. That's one of the reasons I would wanna to see the new roof and everything put on that, I kinda foresaw some stuff coming down. But, um, one, we, I mean, we own the building. And the reason, if I remember for the lease, is so that you could get some grant, right? Okay, i- it's not so much that you own the building and they run it, the lease that we gave them was so that they could get grants. And I think that gets lost somewheres in the translation.
When is the lease expired?
I very much would like to keep that building, 'cause we use it for an awful, awful lot. And as I say, that, that gets lost a lot.
I'm not advocating for its sale or, or, or keeping it. I'm just saying, I wanna keep it in good repair, so I'd like to move forward with the repairs.
There will be an article as the budget comes along.
There will be an article, and, and...
So this is information.
And this, Mr. Justerson's exactly right, the lease agreement does call for, you know, responsibilities of maintenance for various parties, but if they don't have the funding available to do it, we can't just sit back and say, okay, we'll let it fall down around us.
Right. Well, we had agreed a few years ago, didn't we, to just start putting a few thousand every year into it to bring it up? I mean, it was a steps one year, it was a roof one year, it was...
What this does, this is informational, is from capital planning, whose job it is to do these things. And what they're saying to us tonight is, when we see this article, when we go forward with this article, it's gonna become part of their end-of-the-year recommendation, priority report.
Do we have a joint...
He's just telling, but he's going on the record saying, as our capital planning's going on the record, that they consider, capital planning could consider this to be something that we should take into account when the new lease is negotiated, that the building could become expensive. And that's just, whatever we do, we'll discuss it at that time.
Huh. When is the, when does the current lease expire?
I'd have to look, next year, I think, one more year.
Yeah.
So, that's just like I said, it's meant to be more informational than, unless I felt that maybe they were asking for a motion from us tonight, and that's gonna come in the form of when the article gets to us, right? So, that being said, I guess I say that a lot. The next thing is extremely clear, it's just so clear, it's clear.
So clear.
So, did everyone kinda read the, um, the next part of the correspondence? Which is a nomination package by the U.S. Congressional Victims Rights Caucus Annual National Awards. Did you guys get a really chance? I mean, I thought when I looked at this, there might be a lot in this.
Exciting reading.
We might have to take and look at it a little more. Or someone might have the ability to think of someone that we could nominate at this point. Oh, my other, my only other thought is, should we discuss it now?
I think discussing it so people become aware of it makes some sense. The one thing that wasn't clear to me in reading it is if it's only for our constituents, or if we, you know, if I know somebody in Newbury Port who I think might deserve this award, like the Suzanne Dubus, who runs the Women's Crisis Center, would we be putting forward her name or suggest it to Mayor Holliday? And that wasn't clear to me in, in reading through the nomination papers.
I read it and said, you'll, go ahead, Trace.
It specifically says to honor your constituents.
So it is a resume, okay.
So I kinda read it that way, too.
Okay.
But we can certainly put this on our next agenda with, with, if there's anyone that anyone might know of that would fit this criteria of any of these five categories.
Yeah, and I guess I would say it probably makes sense to read the category so that if other people in town would like to recommend someone to us, they have that opportunity.
Yeah, maybe the papers might wanna promote that.
And it also has to be submitted.
All right, let me read this, and the only thing is, let me also say is, with all correspondence, if someone has a thought, this is all public record, they can come and get it, but let me read the five categories, kind of quickly tonight. The first category is the Eva Marillo Unsung Hero Award. And you, and, and it is, let me just say a little further as we go through these things, there's a common theme here. The honoree is a crime victim or survivor who has experienced personal tragedy. And it goes on to recognize people that have been and utilized his or her experience as a crime victim or survivor to promote public education awareness, the public policy development, and our greater awareness about crimes victims' rights through his or her efforts. So that's the first one. It's a person that certainly had, had a need to do and then became very involved in the education. The Ed Stout Memorial Award for Outstanding Victim Advocacy. This award honors the memory of Ed Stout, the Director of Aid for Victims of Crime of St. Louis, one of the nation's three oldest victim assistant organizations, who died in two thousand and five following a thirty-year-plus career of inspiring crime victims and those who served them. The honoree is a professional or volunteer, so it's a little different than the one above. The honoree is a professional or volunteer, whose effort directly benefits victims and survivors of crime. The award recognizes innovations in victims' assistant and crime victim services in the areas of program development, public, or agency, policy development, community and public awareness, and collaboration among community and justice-based organizations that serve victims of crime. The Allied Professional Award. This award recognizes the efforts of individuals, organizations, and our coalitions that directly benefit victims of crime, but whom are not direct victim service providers, including but not limited to criminal and juvenile justice, health, mental health, faith communities, academia, and educators in civic leadership. The honorary exhibits leadership, creativity, and commitment in linking allied professions to improve the plight of crime victims in our nation. The Lois Height Award of Excellence and Innovation. This award pays tribute to the California Judge Lois Height, who, as an appointee of President Ronald Reagan and the Chair of his nineteen eighty-two President's Task Force on Victims of Crime-led pioneering efforts on behalf of crime victims that resulted in specific public policy advocates, policy advances to promote crime victims' rights and services. The honoree is a professional, whose efforts have had significant impact on local, state, national, or international public policy development and motivation to promote dignity, respect, rights, and services of victims. Actually, as hard as this might be to read, I think it's good that we are reading it. And it would also, I think Damon and Alicia said, and maybe Chuck on my left, too, that if anyone that's listening on TV has insight to someone that we might not know, they can certainly approach us with, with that person's name. The Susan McDaniel Memorial Award for Public Awareness. The award honors Susan McDaniel, one of the first prosecutor-based victim advocates in Texas and in the nation. McDaniel created the Harris County's first community inter-agency council on sexual harassment, family violence, and on the first rape-examining protocol for the Houston Hospital and Medical Association. She also formed the Texas Crime Victims Clearinghouse, the first statewide resource in the nation, helped draft and pass the Texas Crime Victim Bill of Rights, the Texas Crime Victims Compensation Act, and the Texas Constitutional Amendment on victim, on crime victim rights. McDaniel passed away on May two thousand and twelve after an eight-year battle with pancreatic cancer, so much cancer. The honoree is an individual or an organization that has used his or her voice throughout the media to promote and bring about changes at the nation level for crime victims. Is there any discussion, wanna add to that, any, for the rest of the board?
Um, I think what we should do is have, we actually only have seven days, I guess, to put this forward, so...
Yes.
Anyways, interested, yeah, a little late getting to us. Doing this, they should get ahold of the chairman right away, and I think, I feel very confident...
Or Ellen, too.
Or Ellen.
'Cause it's probably quicker and easier.
Um, in them contacting us and putting forward anyone who the residents feel qualify.
And probably if they feel there is someone, maybe give us some backdrop to who that is and maybe a little history.
Yeah.
Well, they need to write, they need to submit a nomination.
Nomination.
No more than seven hundred and fifty words.
Yep, good.
Yeah, all the information...
By Tuesday.
Is available at the, at the office.
Yep, so by Tuesday, February sixteenth, five P.M. deadline.
Okay.
All right, review of meeting minutes.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Yeah, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to sign warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any meeting updates? We also have executive session. Do you have it in hand?
Yeah.
Uh, we will be going into executive session, Damon will read, and we won't be coming out of executive session to return to the meeting. Go ahead.
I move we enter into executive session to review and approve the executive session minutes of the twelfth of January two thousand and sixteen and the twenty-sixth of January two thousand and sixteen. The roll call vote as follows, Chairman Walker.
Yes.
Selectman Baer.
Yes.
Selectman Justerson.
Yes.
Selectman Colby.
Yes.
Selectman Greco. Selectwoman Greco.
Um, did we, excuse me for a second, did we pass, pass by citizens' concern?
Did I go by something?
You could've, yes.
Do we have any citizens' concerns?
Heidi's running away, so...
Yeah, if anyone's going into executive session.
Well, we weren't sure if you had anything you needed to talk about tonight, she wanted to make sure before you left.
Yeah.
All right.
We will, the meeting will not reconvene at the conclusion of the executive session. So, um, so I guess...
We're gonna have it here, so...